All right, welcome to the November 19th, 2025 meeting of the Redmond Planning Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We will start with a roll call. Commissioner Kopley.
Present.
Commissioner Coleman.
Present.
Commissioner Gagne. Commissioner Van Nyman will be joining us shortly. Oh, she's here, possibly.
I'm here.
Wonderful. Also present, Vice Chair Woodier.
Present.
And I am Chair Weston. Commissioner Parna is excused tonight. I'd like to thank the following staff for being present. Odrick Cardenas, Glenn Coyle, Michael Hints, Francesca Liberty, and Chris Wyatt. I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
And on favor.
Aye.
Right, that's approved. And I look for a motion to approve the meeting summary from October 22nd, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye. Sorry, aye.
All right, that's also approved. All right, now it's time for us to hear a public comment and items from the audience. Who do we have tonight?
Good evening, Commissioners. We have two people sign up to speak. The first one is David Morton.
All right, and just a reminder that we're keeping our comments to three minutes, and you could start with your name and address, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm David Morton, Redmond 98053. I'd like to talk about the proposed land use and zoning amendments for 690188th Avenue Northeast, aka Redmond Flex. The city's urgent need for housing is understandable, but the long-term economic implications of converting nearly five acres of business park land to residential use is concerning. This is more than a zone change, it's a strategic choice about Redmond's future economic base. Staff recognize that this undermines job creation and business land supply policies. That's significant. Business park zones support the research, development, and advanced manufacturing sectors that have made Redmond economically resilient. Once you convert employment land to residential, you rarely get it back. This property sits in a critical aqua for recharge area, while staff notes residential use poses lower environmental risk than manufacturing. That's an argument for better environmental standards in business park zones, not elimination of employment land. The rationale is troubling. The property owner cites difficulty attracting viable tenants for manufacturing space. But is a temporary market softness sufficient reason to permanently eliminate employment capacity? Economic cycles change. The tech sector is cyclical. Making irreversible land use decisions based on current market conditions seems short-sighted. The fiscal impact deserves closer examination. The report mentions potential loss of business and occupation tax revenue, noting it might be offset by commercial components in mixed-use development. That's speculative. What's needed is concrete analysis of the tax revenue differential between a functioning business park and residential development, including long-term implications for the city's ability to fund services. The commission might consider whether this proposal is strategic or simply reactive. Does Redmond have adequate business park capacity elsewhere to meet 20-year employment projections? Is this conversion a last resort, or is it a premature response to market headwinds? The split-zone challenge is real, but there may be creative solutions short of complete conversion. Could you adjust the business park standards to allow more flexibility while preserving employment capacity? Could you require substantial commercial components in any mixed-use development to maintain job generation? Housing is critical, but so is economic diversity and fiscal sustainability. Please ensure this decision advances Redmond's complete long-term interests, not just immediate development pressures. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person to sign up to speak is Sam Blatner.
All right, and also if you could start with your name and address and keep your comments to three minutes.
Perfect. Planning Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to comment this evening on the land use and zoning map amendments for 6900-188th Avenue Northeast. My name is Sam Blatner, and I'm here representing, on behalf of Columbia Pacific Advisors, the owner of the subject site. We recognize that the study session tonight, an ultimate recommendation to City Council in the weeks ahead, is a crucial step to update the split zoning designation, which will provide Columbia Pacific with the flexibility to develop the site with residential uses, inclusive of affordable units. Residential uses on this site will complement neighborhood adjacencies like Southeast Redmond Park and the property owned by the Lake Washington School District. We appreciate the Planning Commission's close study of our proposal, and we look forward to your thoughtful discussion. Should you have any additional questions for us during tonight's study session, we are happy to provide detailed written responses. Thank you for your consideration of these comments.
Could you also, sorry, one moment. Do we have your address? Great, thank you, just checking.
We don't have anybody else sign up to speak.
All right, thank you. In that case, we're going to move into our study session on the 2026 Annual Docket, specifically the land use and zoning map amendments for 690188th Avenue in Redmond. Bringing up Glenn Coyle.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Glenn Coyle, Senior Planner in the Long Range Planning Team, who will be guiding you through tonight's discussion. This proposal is part of the 2025-26 Comprehensive Plan Annual Docket, the first since the completion of Redmond 2050. We have two items on the docket, the other being the Transportation Master Plan Update, which you will be discussing later tonight. This proposal is specifically a land use map amendment, which is adopted as part of the land use element of the Comprehensive Plan, along with the concurrent zoning map amendment. Staff is seeking a Planning Commission recommendation on a proposal to change a land use designation to citywide mixed-use from business park, and the zoning to corridor mixed-use from business park. As noted, this is part of the annual docket. Comprehensive plan amendments are a Type 6 process as defined in Redmond Zoning Code 2176. The technical committee evaluates the proposal and makes a recommendation to the commission. The Planning Commission's role is to conduct an open record public hearing and to hold study sessions. Planning Commission makes recommendations to the City Council to adopt, adopt with conditions, or deny the proposal. The City Council is the decision-making body. I should also note that zoning map amendments are typically a Type 4 review process outside of the scope of the commission, except what is being considered concurrently with the land use map amendment, as is the case here. I'll provide some context and background on the proposal. This map shows the location. It is a single 5.28 acre parcel that has a split land use and zoning designation. It is located in the southeast Redmond neighborhood between 188th Ave Northeast and 192nd Ave Northeast. It is located in the former Cadman Quarry. Adjacent land uses include the southeast Redmond Park to the south, undeveloped Lake Washington School District property to the north, FedEx to the west, and the Woodside and Woodbridge residential subdivisions to the east and south. Genie Industries and the Redmond Costco are nearby. This map shows the specifics of the land use map proposal. The western one acre is designated citywide mixed-use, while the remaining 4.8 acres is designated business park. The proposal is to make the whole property citywide mixed-use. If it isn't clear, that's the property outlined in orange there. The proposal for the zoning map is similar. The intention is to make the whole parcel corridor mixed-use. This slide goes into detail about what these designations mean. For land use, it means what the purpose of designations intends, and what kind of uses are allowed to fulfill that purpose. The zoning designations help define the size and height of any structure. So as noted, for citywide mixed-use, the purpose to provide for housing and businesses that offer goods and services for the greater community. Usually, we locate mixed-use areas outside of designated centers. Business park land use is to provide for business and manufacturing employment opportunities that involve limited outdoor storage and include compatible uses that serve employees of the immediate area. Allowed uses in the citywide mixed-use include housing, retail, services, cultural and recreation amenities, and businesses that serve the needs of communities in these zones. Allowed businesses and business park include research and development, software development, advanced technology, wholesale businesses, adult entertainment, certain manufacturing businesses and associated offices, schools, or similar uses. For the zoning designations, let me just scroll up here a little bit. The corridor mixed-use has a 45-foot max height, which can go up to 65 feet with incentives. And for the business park, has a 45-foot base height with a 60-foot max. And the floor area ratio is a lot higher for corridor mixed-use. It's about 2.0 and 3 with incentives, whereas business park is .45, that could go up to potentially a max of 1. And one last note on this slide. This proposal is about a land use map change. It is not tied to a specific project or development proposal. Commissioners should think about these designations and allowed uses when reviewing this proposal. This slide summarizes the technical committee evaluation and recommendation. The detailed report can be found in Attachment A of the tech report, which is in your packet. At a high level, these amendments satisfied all the criteria found in Redmond Zoning Code 2176. It can be served by all utilities, public infrastructure, and services. There are no environmental concerns. The only tension that was identified was between the city's goals of increasing housing versus maintaining land for business park uses. That is the crux of this proposal and the commission's recommendation. Okay, the final slide just shows next steps and dates. We are set for a public hearing on the 17th, followed by a study session. And going into the next year, January 14th, we are looking to continue that study session and look for a recommendation with council review in the spring of 2026 concurrently with the Transportation Master Plan. So this concludes my presentation, and I turn it back to Chair Weston. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, so I think what I want to do to structure this. So first, I would like to just get all the questions out that we might have asking for more information. I think the really important thing to note here tonight is we're not, there's no proposal in front of us. Like, we don't know what would be built or what wouldn't be built. The question is really evaluating the land use. So, and with keeping in mind the Redmond 2050 goals, like, there are a lot of competing goals that apply to this decision. You all know that, but let's, anytime we find ourselves kind of getting specific about what could be there, remember, there's no building proposed. We're just doing the underlying maps to meet our jobs and housing goals for this next stretch. Okay, everyone's nodding, so I'll stop repeating. Maybe we can start with questions, and we'll just do round robin. So if people could prioritize their, like, most important things first, then we can kind of flush all those out, and then we can follow up and email if we need to. Commissioner Kopley.
I didn't see in the staff response, but what percentage of the total city zoned business park land is represented by the space that would be rezoned if it were rezoned?
We can provide an answer for that.
Another one, just clarifying specifics. So I'm really weighing this, the jobs growth concern. So if I'm remembering the numbers quick, I just want to double-check my memory. So I believe we need 30,000 additional jobs by Redmond 2050. And in the past, we've talked about the business parks specifically as a real-job incubator, where we're seeing our small businesses, where we're seeing a lot of our BIPOC-owned businesses, a lot of our non-large-technology company businesses, and some large-technology businesses mixed in. But I just was wondering if the city keeps stats that can help us with these decisions, specifically around jobs per acre in different designations. So, for example, if we have a jobs-per-acre in business park versus a jobs-per-acre in, I don't know how much citywide mixed-use we'd have at this point, but just something comparable to give us a sense of job density would be really helpful. And then also number of small or owner-operated businesses, which I think we can pull from business license data, but I don't have access to that. And then the number of BIPOC-owned businesses or percentages, if that's available, would be really helpful in informing this. Because I can't, I know anecdotally it's hard to find manufacturing space. I know anecdotally, like, businesses seem to thrive in these, and we don't have that many of them. But I don't have a sense of, like, what we're actually looking for numerically, so that would really help.
Yeah, I'm not sure we have that granularity of data, but I know we did some analysis on land use during the Redmond 2050 process. I will say, generally for commercial manufacturing, there's some very high-level numbers. It doesn't go into the level of, like, different types of zones and stuff, but we can look back at some of our analysis. Same thing with businesses. That can be a little tricky with business license. There's a lot of businesses that, you know, folks that have done consultant at home, that's considered a business, that can sometimes kind of make less clear what businesses we have in the city, because there's a lot of people that have home-based businesses, as, you know, doing consultant-type work. But that being said, we will try to look into that and see what we provide. I know there's been a recent, like, economic strategy that the city produced that had some of those numbers, too.
And we talked about this specifically in the retreat a year and a half ago. We'd had a presentation.
Yeah, that was the plan. I think that, you know, Philly Marsh, our Economic Development Manager.
Yes.
We can huddle with her and see what we can pull from that.
That would be amazing, because it's, right now, I feel like I'm a little bit treading in dangerous assumptions, not necessarily fact-based. So the more numbers we could have to understand what the job picture actually is in the business parks, the easier it would be to understand, like, what the current setup is. Commissioner Coleman.
When I look at the map, I'm curious, why is the mixed-use, citywide mixed-use there in the first place? Because it seems like a really odd spot for it to be there, and it's like a fifth, is that right, of the acreage? Like, did you say it's about an acre already? Why is it there? What's the history of having that designated in that spot? Because it seems odd.
We mentioned it a little bit in the Technical Committee Report, Attachment A. It's an analysis, but I'll try to summarize. It really ties into just some of the historical land uses in this part of the city. As has been noted, this was part of the old Cadman Quarry, which is now owned by Huddleburg. And for at least the last 30, 40 years, maybe longer, as this hill's been quarried out, it's been, like, sold off and used for other types of development. So at a certain point during the Redmond 2030 process, that there was a, it was actually the beginning of the idea of having, like, neighborhood commercial or having, like, neighborhood centers kind of designations. So folks may even remember, 188th Ave is actually a pretty recent street in the big picture. And so when this area was starting to be redeveloped with, for example, the Woodbridge development and stuff like that, that there was a, and you can see, there's also Southeast Redmond Park. There was a desire to have, like, a neighborhood commercial-type uses in this area. And so with that kind of designation, but also there was also the, and we've almost had the same kind of conversation, probably for the Redmond, you know, 15 years ago, was the balance between, do we maintain this land for type of business manufacturing versus, you know, building homes? So there was this neighborhood commercial designation. This changed in Redmond 2030 to citywide mixed-use, but it has this very similar land uses to that. And so as, you know, as development agreements and these properties, this bigger property has been subdivided and things like that, this particular parcel that's also referred to as Lot 7, I believe, somehow got this neighborhood commercial slash neighborhood design district type of designation. In the past, it's actually was once zoned as multifamily, too. But, and more recently, it's been this split, and then with the Redmond 2050, we continued this kind of split, but with just newer names. So business park and citywide mixed-use. And it said previously it was neighborhood commercial and northwest or northeast design district. Yeah, I was getting my directions wrong, but yeah. And it was very similar land uses. The northeast design district did not allow residential, which was brought up previously by the property owner when we were adopting Redmond 2050. So I don't know if that provides a little bit more context.
Commissioner Van Nyman.
So I just want to clarify that what we've got up here listed as business park is currently owned by the school district.
Let me, I can, it's pretty hard to see the lines, and I don't have. But above the yellow parcel, and then to the right of that is the new Woodside Development. The aerial kind of shows it under construction, but pretty much from 188th Ave, which is on the west, in the middle of the picture there, all the way to the city limit, so the edge of the hill on the east, is the Lake Washington School District property. So everything to the right of that big white building, which is FedEx, that's all the school district property, yes.
And so that's what's marked as red below the next slide? Business park?
Yes. Yeah, pretty much where I labeled the map, business park, is the school district property.
So I know we can't say definitively that that ends up being a school, because it's just land that they currently own. But I do think it would be good to mark it in this documentation, as we're going through the study session and the public hearing, that, you know, business park slash currently owned by LWSD. Because to me, that plays a role in how I think about this, and I think others might think the same.
Yeah, we can do that. We didn't also want to bias everything by label and every property owner, especially, actually, it's really difficult with all the homes there, which are all individual parcels, but, you know, we can note that.
I just, I mean, to me, that seems relevant when we're making this decision. Again, I know we can't say definitively it ends up being a school, but it certainly is something you would want to consider.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that? As far as I understand, from the school board and the district's upcoming levy proposals, there are no plans to develop that site in at least the next five years. Does that match your understanding?
I would have to refer to, the Lake Washington School District does a capital facilities plan that they update every year. The current one is 25 to 30. I don't have a fully memorized, I know there is a, I don't know, within the next five years, because I know there's some enrollment kind of concerns, but I know it is in their long-term plan to build a high school there. But we don't know the time of that, and that's really, you know, up to the school board to make those decisions.
Okay, it would just be helpful to know the short term, because I know we can't really project beyond that. But if any information along with labeling it, Lake Washington School District, would be helpful. Commissioner Gagne.
If that does change from business park to citywide mixed-use, will that prevent the school district from using the land for?
No, this is a different property.
Sorry, then I think I'm confused. Is this the one that's right there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It's not the one that was half citywide and?
No.
Okay, this is the property.
Yep.
That's the property we're discussing.
Yes, this is the property under discussion.
But it abuts property that the district bought a few years ago. Vice Chair Woodier.
Thank you. So I understand from the technical report that the public facilities demands that this potential property zoning change would be sufficient. How do we know that? Like, how often does that, whatever analysis you do, give us assurance that if they build a school there, or if whatever properties are built with this new proposed change, that we're going to have sufficient resources?
So those are kind of separate questions, because you're looking at a site-specific proposal to a different property to the north, whereas this, so just to take a step back.
Because I'm trying to understand.
When we first get the proposal, we submit an application to our development review, and that actually goes through our whole development review process, whereas our planners, our public works folks, our environmental, they all review the proposal, and it was, there's different, it's a group of, like, 10 different, like, parts of the city. Fire, water, wastewater, transportation, they all have to review that and sign off before we can even take it to the technical committee.
That was fairly recent then, like, within the last year.
Well, our technical committee report was just approved a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. And the only reason I asked that question, because I wanted to understand the impact of a decision that we have to make here. So thank you for that explanation.
Commissioner Coleman.
We've had some public comment, but we had any comment from the neighborhood nearby in terms of what their perspective is on this? Has there been any kind of outreach to the neighborhood in terms of the designation, what that might mean to them locally?
So that is actually what the Type 6 process is of these Comprehensive Plan amendments. And that's what the Planning Commission's role is here, is to have those discussions. But there is, there will be notification. City rules require what's called an extraordinary sign. It's those big white signs you see on the property. It has, you know, we'll be holding the public hearing on December 17th. So there's 21-day notice for that, and then, of course, it's published in the Seattle Times and notices like that. And that's the legal process that we follow for these type of proposals.
So I'm just curious, because this seems quite an important aspect for people who live locally there. And so there's no other outreach beyond that directly to the neighborhood? I know with Planning Commission and all the things you talked about, but it feels like it's quite an important question for people to want to answer nearby.
No, not specifically. Yep.
I'm going to jump in with zoning code-specific questions, and they're related, so I'm going to do two. So I would, I'm very curious what impact a potential change would have, specifically to mixed-use, would have on the southeast Redmond noise overlay. It's in the zoning code specifically if that line would have to move north? And then what impact that would have on the surrounding properties to the north and the east? Because as we're to now, it seems like this would impact it.
Yeah, so we can provide probably a little bit deeper answer than that. That noise overlay has kind of shifted over time. Originally, it was kind of bordered on the Woodbridge neighborhood and the park. But as this development has kind of come in, in the Woodside, it's got shifted to the north. So that's kind of where that noise overlay is now. And that, you know, was mitig, you know, there's a new subdivision there. It was mitigated for that. That being said, the property to the north would potentially be a school, so that would probably also be, again, would be shifted more to the north.
And then there's a manufacturing park to the northwest across the road. So that was the one I was actually the most concerned about, because if changing this property changed the use on the manufacturing park, not just business park, that feels like a very big change, because we really just don't have that much of that zoning in Redmond. And then similarly, we And then similarly, we have a whole set of transition overlays just around like what uses can go next to each other and what the buffers have to be. And I wanted to know if a proposal like this went through and we changed just that, then what impact is there on the surrounding properties in terms of do they have to change their outdoor storage? Do they have to change their noise? Do they have to change the hours they're running, transportation to and from? Like all the things that would normally be affected by those overlays?
Yeah, it most likely would not be because they're really, the changes right now, like, like we noted, there's already a corridor mixed use adjacent across the street from the FedEx facility. That's not going to change anything. The Business Park section is adjacent to a residential development. So actually going to corridor mixed use would be kind of a less impactful land use than Business Park. So right now, everything's been kind of approved for Business Park, so.
Perhaps I wasn't clear. So what I'm specifically worried about is the manufacturing park that's sort of in Maroon on the other side of 188th. I just want to make sure that that-
Genie facility?
That that isn't, well, it is now, but over 20 years, I don't know what it will be. There isn't really that much of that space zoned in Redmond. And so I want to make sure we're not artificially limiting what can happen there in the future.
So that actually ties into, and this is separate and it's not within the boundaries, but it's, there's, there's a proposal for a manufacturing industrial center designation. That would include the, the Genie and the FedEx and Costco kind of properties and also parts to the north, north of the school property that that would also include. So those would be, continue to be protected with this, with this center's designation.
With, sorry, one follow-up question to that information. Would, would this impact our center's designation from King County?
No.
For the industrial?
No.
Area?
This is outside, and it was intentionally done that to be outside of the manufacturing industrial center.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Additional questions? All right. I think that's everything for tonight. So if people have additional things that they want in the packet before the hearing, maybe get them in by this weekend to give time to prepare? Is that all right with the holiday and now it's past turnaround?
Yeah, I'll be on vacation, so I won't look at it until, until December. I shouldn't say that in a public meeting, but, but nonetheless, yes, the sooner the better so we can, we can share it with staff and everything. And I'll start working on an issue matrix, including the responses I provided tonight.
Wonderful. One more question from Commissioner Cooley.
Since we're going to look into how many jobs could be, uh, be created on that site, I thought maybe it would also make sense if you guys could give us some numbers on ideas of how many housing units could be built on that site if it were to be rezoned?
Uh, yes, and, and we'll just, just to note that we can only do that based on this max height and actually the floor area ratio. So just want to know, it's a very, that could be a very generic number. You could say, well, maybe that's the most, but there are so many other variables that actually go into that. But we can provide that number, but I want to give all those caveats that we can only analyze it based on the floor area ratio and the size of the property, so.
We won't hold you to it.
All right. Thank you so much, Glenn.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have our study session on the Transportation Master Plan. Bringing up Michael Hintz and Francesca Liberty.
My name is Michael Hintz. I'm the Transportation Planning Manager for the city, and I'm joined by Francesca Liberty, Senior Transportation Planner. And we are here this evening to go over, go over the schedule for the Transportation Master Plan adoption process and Planning Commission review. We also want to take any comments or questions you may have on the public draft of the Transportation Master Plan, which was published last, last Wednesday, November 12th. And we can also respond to issues that were raised at our last meeting and dig into the issues matrix if you would like to do that as well. So really here just to review the schedule and take any comments and questions that you may have on the draft so far. This is generally our, our TMP development schedule. We started, actually started earlier than this, but really started putting pen to paper around Q1 in, in 2024. And we are now here in Q4 of 2025 and looking to, we have a draft and looking to get Planning Commission input and feedback and ultimately aim for adoption in Q1 of 2026. Just a little more detailed, you can see where we are here on November 19th. And our next touch point with Planning Commission will be a public hearing on December 3rd, where we will listen to public comments and also bring forth any, any comments that we've received via email and other channels on the, on the draft TMP. And then on December 17th, we hope to bring a Planning Commission report and recommendation, again, that will summarize comments that we received as well as how we are addressing those comments in any plan revisions that will be made. And that is really our preparation and we'll seek Planning Commission's recommendation to council for adoption of the Transportation Master Plan, shooting for February 3rd. That could change based on council agendas and whatnot. But we will also have a council study session in late January to go over the Planning Commission report and recommendation and answer any remaining questions that council may have on that.
All right. This table summarizes the GMA requirements pertaining to transportation. Currently, these are all addressed in the Comprehensive Plan, Transportation Element and its appendices. As you know, the TMP updates and delves deeper into these strategies and actions related to many of these requirements. The Transportation Master Plan will become the document where these transportation-related GMA requirements are addressed, while Redmond 2050 sets the transportation vision and high order policies. With the TMP update on the 2025-26 comp plan docket, the appendix material in the Transportation Element will be moved to the Transportation Master Plan to allow for ease of future updates and consistency. This slide summarizes the, the structure and the outline of our Transportation Master Plan. Sections in yellow highlight those that include GMA-required components that are the focus of the Planning Commission's recommendation. The street system, pedestrian, bicycle, and transit plans were reviewed by Planning Commission in our previous touchpoints in October of 2024 and June of this year, 2025. The appendix materials were reviewed by Planning Commission as part of the Redmond 2050 process and again at the Planning Commission's study session last month in October. The Transportation Demand Management Section and Transportation Facilities Plan were also reviewed at last month's study session. This presentation and future updates to Planning Commission will be focused on the, the TMP sections or elements that are required by the GMA here.
Okay, just a quick review before we jump into your comments and questions. Just kind of repeating myself here, but looking forward to the public hearing on December 3rd and, and then on December 17th, meeting with the commission to go over the report and recommendation to council. And then that January 13th date is actually wrong. It's January 27th, we'll be having a council study session. And then February 3rd is the potential TMP adoption by council. So with that, happy to stick any comments or questions that you may have so far in your review of the public draft. We can also revisit some of the, the comments in the issues matrix that we attached to your materials as well.
All right. Thank you. So I think we're going to do the same thing here where we just go around and sort of collect people's feedback, try to prioritize. And at this point, I think we can do a little bit of limited bouncing back and forth if someone raises a topic that a bunch of people have follow-ups or additional comments on. But we're going to try to make sure that we are getting through all of the conversation and then we can cycle back, if that's all right with people. All right. So who would like to start? All right, I will. So I wanted to ask about strategy for, for speed reduction. So this is the first time that I've either noticed or seen the exact numbers about what sort of speeds would be on different roads in this, coming around the city. And they make sense to me in some places, but what I'm really concerned about is that there could be places, especially where we abut with other jurisdictions that have much higher speeds on those roads, or where it just doesn't make sense how people are used to driving if the speed limit suddenly drops. I'm really worried that we're going to get in a situation where we have a third of drivers on the road going 45 or 50 and two-thirds going 25. And it's just, I think that's going to cause so much friction. And so I was looking at some examples just in my neighborhood where I'm a little bit more used to like going speeds. So one example is on 140th South going into Bellevue. So this is sort of a backdoor commuter road to Microsoft. People are used to going 40. If we drop that to 25, there's a separated bike lane on one side of the road. It's very spaced out. These are the old horse estates. There are a couple of like blinky light crossings that are well-marked, but it's, it doesn't read as a road where people are going 25. I see that as being very dangerous. 132nd north of 85th is another one like that where it's a wider road. There's not much visible housing on it. There's very, parts of it have pedestrian traffic near the community college, but otherwise there's not very much. And it's how people get to Totem Lake from that side of 405. So it's, I think there are just some in here where I'm, like, until the road reads as more realistic, I think people would be very mixed in how well they follow that speed guidance. And so I just wanted to hear a little bit more about how much feedback you'd actually gotten from the community. And again, I might've just missed these numbers and they've already been presented, but I didn't, seemed abrupt.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to that. So far, we haven't gotten any feedback on that, those specific numbers presented in the TMP. I will say that Public Works is embarking on a citywide speed study starting in Q1 of next year. So the, the TMP is really sort of setting the strategy for this. And that study is, is going to dig really deep into the speed data. So looking at all these roads you just mentioned and all roads citywide to look at what the existing speeds are and, and then it will present recommendations for what needs to happen in a given roadway before the speed, the posted speed can be reduced. So you've mentioned several times how the roadway reads to the driver and that's, that's a huge part of it, right? You can post it at 25 miles per hour, but if it doesn't read that way, people aren't going to drive that. So of course it's critical to make some design and operational changes in some corridors before you drop the, the speed limit. It all is going to depend on what the data shows. You know, if we're seeing that people are driving close to the posted speed limit, then, you know, in some cases we'll feel confident reducing that speed limit by five miles per hour, for example, without needing to make a lot of changes to the roadway. But in a lot of cases, there'll need to be those changes made before we can reduce those speeds.
It would also maybe be interesting to look at just not averages of like if most people are within, but sort of where the outliers are. Because I think where it gets really dangerous is if you have like half of traffic doing one thing and half of them doing the other. And so I just, I really can see that, like the frustration level causing problems there.
Yep. Yeah, we look, we look at a variety of data, 85th percentile speed, 50th percentile pacing speed, all that, so.
Thank you. Who else? Commissioner Coleman.
I want to, I just want to follow up on Commissioner Parnas' question in the, the issues matrix. This is a topic we talked about previously about e-bikes and safety and speed. So I've been, I was trying to look through it to understand exactly what we're going to do. I know when we talked about it last time, it was about education, so, but I get lost in, I was getting, again, I was just trying to find, in sort of page 112, Action 3C talks about safety. And it says it's actually then connected to Section 10, in terms of the TDM and safety sections. I, I don't know, I'm at a loss to try and work out exactly what we're doing because I couldn't find connections. I couldn't work out whether, what we're doing from a safety perspective for, for e-bikes. What are we doing as a safety, I suspect particularly for the, these faster e-bikes we're talking about? How should we think about that? And how should, basically, how should the public navigate this document to understand that? Because it's an important question, I think, for the public.
Yeah, well, take another look at that. I think we were referring to an action in the Bicycle Chapter around bicycle safety and including e-bikes and those safety messages and programs that the city would push out. I will say that, you know, the, the, the issue related to these high-powered e-bikes, which is top of mind for, for many in, in our community, is kind of being worked out in real time, working with police and communications to put messaging out there. In fact, it's going to go live next week on the city's web resources to really clarify the different classes of e-bikes and how a lot of these e-bikes that are being purchased for youth and, and others are, are not classified and are, yeah, that basically parents should buyer beware, that these are not vehicles that their children should be, should be driving.
Commissioner Coleman.
Just a quick follow-up there. I think last time when we talked about this, you were saying like either King County or the state have to pass some, something around this? Isn't there's not a kind of a state or maybe a county law?
That's correct. There's, um, these devices which are being called, you know, e-motocycles, e-dirt bikes are not defined in the RCW as motorcycles. And my understanding from talking to police that that is a necessary step in order to do enforcement.
Yeah, that's exactly my next question. Thank you, you answered that. You can't enforce it because it's not against the law at the moment.
Yeah, so we're, we're watching that closely at the state level.
Commissioner Van Nyman.
Okay, so my comment is kind of about the larger, the document as a whole. I felt like I needed a little bit more, tell them what you're going to tell them, a little more introduction for each of the sections, like where we're going as opposed to just streets and, you know, oh, now we're going to, all of a sudden, we're going to talk about all of what type of streets Redmond has. And then, oh, now we're reading about, you know, speed limits and now we're reading about different types of transportation. And it just, I, I needed, I, I needed to know where we were going and I felt that kind of way with each section. You know, here's what we're going to talk about. And we're also going to talk about these strategies. We're going to provide three strategies to implement these goals that we're talking about at the front, right? Make it a little bit more cohesive. Some of the, I know this is a draft, but some of the, what are we calling them? Figures and tables and such are not sequentially labeled correctly. sequentially labeled correctly. There's some that go from like three to three. On page, well, it's labeled as page 42 in the document. The, there's a, it's 29 in the packet. It's labeled 42 on the document, page. There's a, a table there that doesn't have any explanation for what it is when we're looking at multimodal level of service. There, it's just, it's got like private motor vehicle, 700 to 1,000, local bus, 1,000 to 2,000, rapid ride. And it's got these numbers. And it, you, I'm not seeing anything that tells me an explanation of what I'm looking at. No description, no, you know, rides per day or whatever. That was mainly it, is that I felt like for each section, I just wanted a little bit more of a lead-in and, and transitions and helping me, helping me through the document. It's a big document. And I always like to know where I'm going instead of having to, you know, figure it out as I'm reading. Also, some of the color coding is not consistent, which not a huge deal, but.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Copely.
Just curious if the e-bike legislation would also pertain to scooters. Some of those scooters can move pretty quickly.
I'm not sure. The discussion has been mainly around these, these e-dirt bikes and motorcycles. But that's something we can look into.
Yeah, I can beat the traffic home on Avondale on a scooter sometimes. So they're pretty fast.
Yeah, full body armor, yeah.
I'm going to jump in with one. So I had a question about a map on page 105. So this was, it felt very appropriate to what we've been talking about with the e-bikes. And it was about converting trips under two miles to micro mobility, specifically where the investment will go to ensure that things are safe. But I, maybe I'm misreading the numbers around the arrows. Again, this is page 105, Figure 3. So the conclusion of the map that was that most trips under two miles are happening in downtown Redmond over Lake and Southeast Redmond. And I just could not believe that that, I don't know what this map will be used for in terms of decision-making, but I just could not believe that the hundreds of trips that they were mentioning per day even began to compare to the schools. When you have kids leaving, so average elementary school, like walking distance is considered one mile. Average middle school, it's, I believe, two is walking distance. A lot of those parents are driving every single day. And so just to give some numbers, so Ottoman Elementary has 431 kids. Rush Elementary has 633 kids. Most of those are walkers, not bussers. We have Rose, or sorry, Redmond High School has 2,315 students. That didn't even show up on here. Rose Hill has about 1,000. Redmond Middle School has 1,010 last year. So I just, if that map is being used for decision-making to say most micro mobility in the next five to 10 years is happening in Overlake and Southeast Redmond and downtown Redmond, I just don't think that's appropriate. So like when we're talking about the safety issues that are happening with kids getting to school, if that map isn't capturing that information, I think it needs to be updated as a decision-making tool.
Yeah, just to clarify, that map is not being used for decision-making. It was really an interim step towards informing the network. And so, and it was really intended to illustrate, you know, where, where a lot of those trips are happening. We used replica data, which is kind of a big data platform. And it is interesting. I think it's a, an interesting observation that you make that it's not really capturing those, those school trips. That data is based on cell phone, mobile, mobile data, primarily, but not exclusively. So it's curious why that wouldn't show up. We'd have to take a look at, you know, why that, why that might be.
Yeah, it's, were the conclusions from that map and that section that the primary micro mobility focus should be in the centers? Were those, is that still the conclusion?
I think the, the, it did help inform the spine network, which is our kind of priority, main arterial network for, for the bicycle network. So those all feeding into centers.
Yeah, because it's, I think that the, like, the vehicle miles traveled question, like how to reduce that, is really important. But when we have these blind spots around how a fifth of Redmond residents, like in that K through 12 population, are getting to their daily spot every day and home, let alone all the activities, it just, like, I don't think we have a very accurate view of what's actually happening. And like where the safety focus needs to be.
I will say the, I mean, the outcome, if you look at the bicycle network, it's, the schools are well-served by the bicycle network. We know that, you know, those are a significant number of trips that are happening every day in vehicles that we want to happen in other, other modes. So the bicycle network, you know, connects to all the schools. And our programming through transportation management and other efforts are also focused on trying to shift those trips and get people to carpool, walking school buses, bike trains, those kinds of things. And I think that's really what the focus is, needs to be on, to get folks out of their cars.
Yeah, but specifically on the micro mobility, like the conversion of those vehicle miles traveled to micro mobility. When you're looking at like the middle schools, those aren't very well served. Like, that's, they're really in contention with cars to get to those campuses. Elementary schools, very few of them have bike programs. The high schools are booming as far as I can tell, but it's still there in contention with cars. So I just, I think that the situation on the ground has been changing really fast when it comes to the e-bikes specifically. And I want to make sure that the city is really, like, we have an opportunity here to address something that I think a lot of people find scary. And it's a barrier to adoption. Like, if we really want to drive those vehicle miles traveled down for the short trips, like, we need to make sure that kids aren't getting hurt on the way to school. So I'm just, I, I want to make sure that, like, whatever it's possible, maybe just that figure needs to be removed because it's no longer applicable. But it's, there's a, there's a conversation around it also, and like where.
Trying to, I guess I'm trying to understand the connection you're making between that map and safety.
If the, well, that map was specifically around replacing vehicle miles traveled for short trips with micro mobility. My contention is that is not a commuter question, the way it was represented in that map of commuters going to centers. My contention is that it's children going to school. And so that's a very different funding question and a very different set of safety questions. Vice Chair Woodier.
And I would say, as we think about bicycles, we have to be thinking about scooters because the scooter use has exploded, at least in, at least in the Education Hill area. And so there, there are two of them, two of the same in my, in my view.
Yeah, I really like the micro mobility. Like, that's a great catch-all term to wrap up all of this, but, so I hope I'm using it correctly. Because, but I agree, scooters are absolutely part of it. Okay, wow. Sorry, Commissioner Gagne.
I had maybe a similar, not on the exact same vein, but I really liked the Neighborhood Connections figure that's on page 44. For me, that helped to visualize. I live on Education Hill. My kids use those Neighborhood Connections for the exact reason that Chair Weston shared, right? That we live within the zone where my kids have to walk. So we've memorized the safer routes. And it's clear that part of the plan is to identify and look for other opportunities for Neighborhood Connections. What I'd love to see or understand more is the, how that focus is being made. Is it on, based on, safety data that's come to light? Is it based on making sure that we're meeting the needs of our most vulnerable populations who rely on walking only? Like, how will, because there's, you know, the map shows very clearly that we're extremely lucky in Education Hill to have all of those connections, but it looks like they're pretty sparse in other areas. I'd love to hear how that's being prioritized and focused for the whole community.
Yeah.
I love that map. Thank you.
Commissioner Copely.
So caught up in thinking about what Commissioner Gagne said, I forgot that I had a comment too. If I had to encapsulate the community feedback that I've gotten in 18 months I've been a commissioner about transportation with people that use micro mobility or bikes, I'd say 75 to 80% of it has to do with not feeling safe from a strip of paint. I've heard that so many times. And I've started now reading the, the Redmond subreddit, and I'm seeing that echoed there too. I'm hopeful that I can just take all of that and then say, hey, 80% of the people I talk to that do these things would love to see at least turtles or, or something to notify a driver who's not paying attention that they've started to veer into the bike lane. And I can just say anecdotally that I've been taking the scooters, taking the bikes from downtown into North Redmond. And it's, it's a bit scary sometimes, even if you've got a nice wide bike lane, because you can see someone, one time I almost got hit by a U-Haul that had its mirrors way out. And of course, that person is probably not a daily driver of large trucks because they're in a U-Haul. And I just didn't feel safe being in the bike lane because nothing could notify that guy that he's, or woman, that they're driving into the bike lane if they're not paying attention. So I ended up on the sidewalk. And I know I'm not supposed to be there, but that's where I felt safe. So I kind of get it too. Now I have some lived experience that way.
Commissioner Woodier, or sorry, Vice Chair Woodier.
And I would just add on top of what Commissioner Copely is saying is I've seen way too many sort of accidents and destruction as a result of this. So cars driving through brick walls, which is adjacent to the bike paths, cars landing on top of, of, of street fixtures. And so it's a real concern, and I'm hearing that even among us commissioners. So if there's a way in which that can be addressed more, more effectively, that would be really appreciated.
Commissioner Coleman.
Just a quick comment on that, because there was some public comment in the, that we got during the week around this exact topic. I don't think we read that, but from a cyclist, which I read through, which was very similar. I have a question as well, if I can do that too. I'd like to go back to things we, we talked about before around electric vehicles. We've talked e-bikes, we've talked scooters. I'd like to talk a bit about the safety aspects around EVs and the street system plan. So when I read through, I'm pleased to see the content that's in here. And when we've talked before, we've discussed about how do we think about education for people driving EVs, given they're silent, they're faster, they're heavier, they have more momentum. When they hit somebody, even in a 20 mile an hour area, it's actually much harder impact. And so when I look through the, the content here, I see speed being talked about, but I don't see anything around the relativity of impact of those vehicles, primarily because in this area there are so many EVs, and it's only going to probably increase because of the way that our, our strategy is to go that way. And I, I don't see anything called out. It, it's not about calling people out. It's about educating people about what they're driving and the fact that it's actually potentially a more dangerous vehicle than a gas vehicle because of the things I was talking about. Is there anything in here that could be included? Because I'm talking specifically about streets, just so for, for the content here, street system, plan, strategy two, and sort of action two B that's in there. And in strategy four, where we talk about speed, and that's actions four A, four B, four C, and four D. I don't see anything in there that really talks to educating people around electric vehicles, which is partly the future. So I know it's a long-winded question, but is there something else we can do there to help people understand what they're driving and the challenges and dangers of it? In, in pedestrian zones is what I'm primarily talking about.
Yeah, I appreciate that question. It, it may be something worth calling out in the e-mobility section. Just calling out the fact that these are quiet, tend to be quieter, and therefore, drivers of them should be more aware.
I think it's more than that.
Yeah.
It's not just that. It's that if, if you're in a 0 to 20 zone, you can be at 20 miles an hour within like five, I'm making this up somewhat, but like much quicker in an, in an e-vehicle. It's heavier. So if you hit somebody, the momentum of that vehicle and the speed it's going at over that distance is going to hurt somebody way more than a, well, it's going to hurt somebody if you hit them with a car, but more than another vehicle because of the momentum and the weight of that vehicle and its acceleration. So there are, you know, it's, it's dangerous. And there's a lot more of those cars here, and we're not really talking about it. We're talking about e-bikes, we're talking about e-scooters, and we're talking about, you know, these mopeds. We should be talking about EVs as well.
I think if you're going to do that, you're also going to need to talk about pickup trucks and large vehicles, which is really where the data is, is pointing in terms of injuries and fatalities is related to SUVs and pickup trucks. And I haven't really seen any, any data on EVs just yet. I'm not saying that that's not an issue. But if, if we really want to call out what the, the safety risks are, it would be those vehicles.
Yeah, there's some from Europe. I've seen some in Europe. I think I shared in one of the emails I sent previously. But yes, it's new. I totally grant you that. And in this area, we don't have that data. But the facts about EVs are the case, and we should get ahead of it. I mean, I think the, the comment here is safety is proactive. I'm just quoting what's in the actual document. So we should be proactive for safety around EVs, is my point.
So maybe just characterizing as high-mass vehicles, like where the weight is higher?
No, it's about momentum.
I see.
It's a different, sorry, it's a physics. It's physics.
Yeah.
It's about momentum. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So. I'd just like us to be able to try and address that. I get, I granted trucks and larger vehicles, gas vehicles are a problem, but they're noisy as well. Right? So you have some degree of warning you don't with an EV. So we've got lots of them here. And I don't want people to, you know, I want people to understand what they're driving as well. So.
I can go back to the previous point. Just one more thing on the bike map. There was a really good point towards the end. And I know we covered this at one of our meetings, maybe last fall, just about the bike level of traffic stress. So it was a one to four scale, just basically summarizing exactly what other commissioners have been saying about how safe people feel on the roads. And I was wondering if there was any way to cross-reference that with the existing bike system map that we have. Because I was just, my family bikes a lot. And so I, I have a vested interest in this, but also a fairly good set of issues at this time built up of just like where some of the issues are. And there, there was, for example, there's a whole stretch of things that are light blue on the map. And so these are, I'm just sorry, I wrote it down, bike lanes slash sharrows slash shoulder. And they're on the bike map. I personally don't think anything that's just a shoulder should be included on the bike map. And if it's not a regulation bike lane, it probably should not be included on the bike map. So near me, an example of that is 80th, which is the path to an elementary school and a middle school. And then another one would be 51st, which is this steep, steep, steep hill going down to Marymore, is technically a bike road. I, every now and again, you see some intrepid soul on it. But it's, that's not a very safe place to bike because it's an incredibly narrow shoulder slash. place to bike because it's an incredibly narrow shoulder slash lane. I would argue that, and another one, I know this is kind of out of our purview, but the King County Trails, Mammoth River Trail, it's technically illegal to ride a bike on there after sunset, before sunrise, which means the entire winter, like people aren't allowed to commute on it on a bicycle. So including on the bike map doesn't entirely feel appropriate. So what I was kind of hoping is that we could have a like ideal view of that map, and then also a little bit more of a reality-based view that includes that one through four safety level, and also the caveats where it's like, I mean, it's there, but you're not allowed to use it for chunks of time. Because I think that would give people a much better sense of like how well, when we're talking about the spine and we're talking about new investment, I don't want to be like, oh, this fits so well into an area because it's already covered. But then to be like, well, it's there, but it's people, it's not really usable. It's either the grade is impossible, or it's, the bike lane is from the 90s, so it's not current widths, or whatever other, sharrows have been shown to be very dangerous in our city and the surrounding ones. So like, just maybe a little bit more of a reality check map.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is beyond kind of the existing bike network, having a map that shows the level of traffic stress for that existing bike network.
Would be real, just as a like side-by-side decision tool, because it's, I really like the idealist, optimistic state of like, we really can get everywhere, but I think it's helpful to also be like, where is it actually safe to bike? And especially when we're making those investment decisions. Commissioner Copley.
Yeah, I'll second that. I think it's a great idea. And it might be interesting to see what community feedback to those numbers would be, just generally, but then also, and then how would you feel about your level of safety going down or up Redmond-Woodenville Road in the bike lane after dark on the windy road if you had turtles? You know, would that reduce you from a four to a three? Right? Just something like that, where we could see, oh, gosh, we could make a huge impact here if we just put in X, Y, or Z. That could be interesting too, just as an idea.
Commissioner Coleman.
I'd love to ask a question about roundabouts. I think as other commissioners know, I come from the, from the, the world capital of roundabouts, which is, which is, which is the UK. So I'm being flippant. I had a question, like, do we know how many accidents we have around roundabouts? And the reason I ask that question is, I, I personally had, this is a personal question, so it's like N equals one in terms of sample size, but, you know, I've seen various people flash in front of me when it's actually not there right away. And there, and it's a serious question, which is, I, I actually think it's a great idea. Roundabouts are a much better system in many respects, in the right places, as is outlined in the plan. And I think it's an education process or something around those roundabouts. For example, you know, give way to cars, you know, that are already on the roundabout would be a helpful sort of comment. I don't know if there's anything around that you've been considering, or any, it's any data on roundabouts are, are an issue? If they're not, not accidents, then that's it, then it's probably mute.
All I can say is they're a proven safety countermeasure, so that means that they tend to reduce crashes rather than increase crashes. And I would say they're, you know, proliferating around the state, and the more people interact with them, I think hopefully the more they become well-versed in operating within them. Yeah, don't know what else to say on that.
Fair enough.
I have a follow-up on that. I'm going to jump in, and then I'll pass it around to everyone's like excitement just flared. So this is probably N equals two, or in terms of sample size. But I just, I have real concerns about the roundabout issue, just because I know that they are new to the area for the most part. And I've seen some implemented very well. So for example, there are two in Woodenville that just keep things moving along, they're very clear, I don't see people misbehaving. It's kind of amazing, given it's near so many wineries, but it's just like, it kind of like moves stuff along. The one by Perrigo Park is terrifying. So that one, I have never been in it without being cut off by a pickup truck driving aggressively over the median. So that's my, my child played frisbee there, I was there multiple times a week, and every single time, it's, I don't know what it is about the design of it, but it is really, really scary to drive in. I'm also, thanks to Child Sports, up in Totem Lake a lot, where Kirkland has just put in a whole set of them on either side of 405 to manage traffic there. And there is a lot of pedestrian traffic in that section too, because it's near a hospital, there's a park and ride, there's a high school, there's a pool, there's just like a lot have, there's a ton of apartment neighborhoods increasingly, and it's, no one knows how to handle those. People aggressively squirt out is the only way I can describe the driving, when they finally realize that if they don't just go, that they're never going to get to go in. And so it's just, it's very, very scary to drive in those. You kind of have to have five eyes out, and pedestrians are completely invisible. So I think that there's like, again, it can be really, really good when it's good, but I haven't had great luck with the new ones. And I'm, I think that it's designed, because like the Woodenville ones are still working, and the new ones are scary. And I, the new ones have been in place for several years at this point, like people should be used to them, and I'm still seeing the driving. So I just, I would like a little bit more skepticism registered on like, and it's possible, the plan did mention that there's a design guide. I'm sure that it's taking some of this into account, but like to say that it's a safety improvement is not the way it actually feels to be a driver in many of these. So it, I think there needs to be like a real focus on making sure that design is right.
Yeah, I totally agree. I think the design of roundabouts has evolved quite a bit in recent years. So, yeah, in terms of pedestrian safety and increasing pedestrian visibility at roundabouts is paramount in the design of those roundabouts. So something, you know, that's a design thing, as you stated, so something we'll be keeping an eye on when, when more are constructed.
Perhaps maybe before more are constructed though, because I really don't want to see the repeating mistakes that we're seeing in some of the new ones. I'll pass it off, I made my point, but Commissioner Copley.
So the Perrigo Park one, if you head south, it's got an evil twin. There's another one that's also double-barreled, and as you go through that, it is nearly impossible to have, you know, an experience with that without almost running into someone who doesn't really know how to use it. And I would probably include myself in that. Luckily, when you go south into it, there is a beautiful diagram that tells you exactly how to operate in the double-loaded roundabout. However, when you're coming from Costco and you're heading east to it, I haven't seen it. I was thinking, gosh, it would be nice to have that reminder of exactly how I should operate inside this double-barreled, you know, thing. And I also just want to note Chair Weston's colorful ward choice. I thought it was one of the best ones we've had since I've joined the planning commission. Aggressively squirting out of the roundabout.
Thank you. Commissioner Coleman.
I stopped, what, sorry. Stopped for a second. I, I think what you were just describing is kind of where I was trying to get to, which is having something that's basically says, give way to people on the roundabout. Right, there's, there's some kind of signage for people who've never used a roundabout here, which is quite a lot of people to actually understand what it means, actually put up. And it could be temporary, by the way, until people get used to it. But you know, again, I learned to drive in a roundabout world, and people seem to generally know how to do it in the UK, but here it just seems like, it does seem like shut your eyes and go for it, in terms of squirting out, so to speak, in their traffic.
That matches my experience. Okay, anything else on roundabouts, or did we cover it?
Yeah.
Commissioner Gagne, go for it.
I wanted to add a roundabout too, I guess. I guess it's more just a comment. There's like a part of me that's skeptical, like why is the city being asked to spend money on this? Because I think drivers are required to pass a driving test and a written test from the state that has very explicit instructions on how to behave and operate inside a roundabout. And do we really, you know, spend city resources on that? I suppose yes, because we want our communities to be safe. But maybe I have a question of, are there, if we know that there are problem roundabouts, and I agree that the one in Perrigo is scary, and I've been the person waving the flag, being like, see me, see me, don't run me over, that the state will provide extra, you know, funding for signage or things if the city has identified that there's a problem area? It's just a curiosity is.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, we apply for state funding for safety projects every other year. The data does not show that there's an issue with the roundabouts inside Redmond. And if there were, then yeah, it's something that we would definitely look at and see what else can be done to, to reduce that, that safety risk.
Just a button, yeah, no data, just a bunch of anecdotes from.
Well, I mean, so, I mean, we, we are really concerned with fatal and severe injury crashes, right? That's, that's our primary, of course, we don't want to see any crashes happen. But, you know, the, the things that really raise safety risk to a high level is when there's fatal and severe injury crashes. And I definitely have not seen those in, in the, I mean, I think Redmond has, there's the two, two roundabouts up on 116th, and the double roundabouts that you're speaking to are in the county. And I think generally, you know, you'd want to think twice before building a, a multi-lane roundabout. I think that's something that has been done a lot in the past, and may not be the best solution. And I, I don't really see us having a lot of those opportunities here in, in Redmond.
So the one that we've been all sort of chattering about, the Perrigo one, that's a county-owned, not a city? Thank you.
Sure.
The multi-lane's a helpful distinction, because all the ones that I'm thinking of at that.
Yeah.
They're, they're really hard to.
That's.
But if people change lanes, then it becomes alarming fast. Okay. Commissioner Copley. Oh, sorry, and then we'll bounce over.
I had a quick question. Is there, to what degree is there more coordination between the county and the city in terms of managing the speed? Because I'm noticing that where we have the biggest problems with roundabout recklessness or, or gaps in the, in the, in the city where there's no policing of the, of the speed and management of the speed, like those, those zones around Perrigo, or I think those are county-owned areas, people are driving like 85, 90 miles an hour, like that's a, that's a great, that's a speed surge dream road. And, and because of, because of that unchecked speed, you're having problems with people driving through the roundabouts, making the roundabouts really unsafe. That's a contrast to what you see in Woodenville, where there is better policing of, or management, rather, of the, of the traffic. So it's those gap areas that I think are big opportunities, because they impact mobility, they impact safety, they impact all the things that we're talking about in this plan.
Mm-hmm.
So it's really kind of sewing up those gaps is where the opportunity is.
Thank you. Commissioner Copley.
This morning, there was a King County Sheriff parked right there, talking about like a bear in those videos, just waiting for like the salmon to jump into his mouth. I mean, he was just right there, just tagging people, so I hope that makes you feel better. They figured it out. Yeah. My other comment is forgotten, so I'm going to pass.
All right. I'm going to jump in, and then I'll pass it back. So I wanted to talk about, there's a table on page 50 that has, this is in the streets plan, and it has a whole list of, I think it's like 37 or something, different projects, everything from the bike spine to, it's just, it's very broad. And I was wondering if it would be possible, like I really, really like this table, I like the coordination with the map, but I was wondering if it would be possible to add some sort of priority scheme? I don't know if it's like saturation on the colors on the, or some sort of buckets or something. Because right now, it's one through mid 30s, I believe, but based on location, not based on priority. So I can't tell in a 20-year plan which of these are high priority, which of these are due first, which of these are, if we get to it, medium priority, but really expensive. Some of them included like drainage improvements, so that sounds expensive, but possibly state money. So I just, I couldn't actually look at this list, it was too big to compartmentalize or break down or really use as a useful document. And this seems very important, so I would just love if this.
The modal corridors, planned improvements, is that what, table three? Is that the one you're referring to?
Yeah, on page.
Page 50 of?
Page 50.
Okay, got it.
So just a little bit more on this to make it, I don't know if it's icons, I don't know if it's like asterisks, just something to be like, do these first, these come last. Commissioner Coleman.
I'd like to switch gears a little bit and talk a bit about, or ask some questions around the first mile, last mile aspect. I was going through the different areas here, and I have a bunch of different places, and I want to step back a second. I want to go back to what Commissioner Van Neumann said earlier on about understanding what it means for people in, in Redmond to get to light rail. And, and after going through it, I wrote a note to myself saying, can we tell a story, a practical story of a family of four, and how do you get to light rail if you're in Foo area or Y area, or what are your options? Because it's really confusing in here, I can't pick out, I, I could give you, I could spend like 10 minutes here talking about different pieces in here that I've gone through to try and find out, you know, how we think about micro mobility for the first and last mile for older people, how we think about the sort of the service links, these sort of service link connections are the primary sort of corridors, the things that people should be going to to get to the light rail. There's not, there's not a clear story for local communities to understand, how do I get to light rail? And that's what I believe we're trying to do a majority of our communication around how to get to downtown in the urban center, and particularly to light rail. It's not clear at all, and I think you need a bit more clarity. Some storytelling would be helpful, would be my comment.
Commissioner Copley.
I love this idea, and I think it's imperative that we do it prior to the World Cup. I think a lot of people from our area are going to think about using the light rail for the first time as the best alternative to driving or something else once the World Cup is happening next summer. And they're going to think, okay, I want to get over there, right? But I don't want to sit in all that traffic, I'm going to hop on this thing. So I think that's a fantastic idea. And second, I did remember my question, I forgot.
All right, well, hold on just a second. Does anyone have anything about the light rail, follow-ups on that? I agree with you, like, to me, it feels very piecemeal still, and maybe that's appropriate, or maybe more storytelling would be great.
Just have one other wrap-up question. I was in the UK recently, and there's a mobility app there, which you can pretty much for any city, and ask it, get me from here to here. And it's not precisely what we're talking about here, but it gives people something they can just go to go, hey, I'm in such and such an address, how do I get from my address to the light rail immediately, right now? Now, that's doable, I think, it's been, it's been put out there. I think if, if the council could do something, not immediately, around that, it would make it a lot easier. And I think it would encourage people to think about using transportation that's not their car to get to the center of town versus something else if they knew how to do it and when to do it.
Great, thank you. All right, Commissioner Copley.
When you were talking about chief concern being prevention of deadly accidents, do we have a, these are the top five most deadly intersections in Redmond?
We did that analysis for the Safer Streets Action Plan.
Okay. I, I brought it up because representing my area, the 168th and 124th, I think it is, I'm just going to double-check that, 162nd and 124th intersection has been deadly in our neighborhood, and I was just hoping that there's some database somewhere that's collecting this information. And so it's just, it's great to hear that you guys are, are tracking that and thinking about that.
Yeah.
Secondly, that's connecting to King County, who has jurisdiction there, when it's city and county.
Yeah, that intersection and 124th is county, but we do recognize that as a, a safety need, for sure. So there's been some discussions with the county, and I'm not sure what they have planned for that, but we do know it to be a safety issue there.
I have one that's so small that it might indicate that we're almost done. But it's, it's one of those just like integration pieces. In the discussion on street trees, which was great, and I love the goals there, they were talking about using rubber pavers, and this was something subjected. This was something suggested by Parks to make, basically to make it more hospitable for the trees. And I wanted more clarification on what that material actually is. Because if it's the rubber mulch that I've seen in other places, that gets blown into the bike lane and then is really dangerous. And since we're talking about street trees, like something that might work better in a park would not work in this particular application. But I couldn't tell if it was like, first of all, if it's even the same material. And then second of all, if it's, if a park recommendation got adapted into the plan without like an appropriateness check?
That did not happen. So there's various products out there. We would not put mulch in that street environment because the goal, the goal for this kind of material is twofold. One is to allow water to permeate to the roots, and two is to have a walkable surface. So if you're in Seattle ever, they're doing a lot of this. They've used pavers, which are actual sort of modular-type material in the past, but now going towards more of a poured, homogeneous rubber surface.
Amazing.
Yeah, so it's, you know, it's a great solution, probably some, and there's definitely maintenance around it in long term. But generally can, yeah, like I said, make for a healthier tree and a more accessible sidewalk.
Thanks for explaining, that sounds lovely. I just wanted to make sure it wouldn't crumble. Commissioner Coleman.
I just want to make a comment to say thank you. We've asked you a bunch of questions. I know I've asked you a bunch of questions because transportation is something I'm quite passionate about. But I wanted to make an observation, which is, we've, it's not very often you go from what's a suburban sleepy town to a light rail-linked city, which has so much growth and building, and it affects transportation, the people, how do we do it? And what we're looking at now, I know is early, but I want to say thank you for everything you've put together here and taken our questions. Because it's easy to ask the questions, it's not easy to put the documentation together. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
160 pages of.
Really didn't want it to be that long, but somehow.
There's a lot to cover. Commissioner Kopley, another thing?
I'll just echo the thank you. It was, it was a lot of reading material, but it was warranted. So, you know, it's not like you guys were going Tolstoy on it. I think it was, it was good.
Any final thoughts, or we, did we get there? All right, I think that's good for tonight. Thank you so much for being here.
And of course, we're, you know, open to more comments and questions through the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so with that, we are going to move on to staff and commissioner updates.
Yes, so our next meeting is on December the 3rd, and we are going to continue with the Transportation Master Plan. We have a public hearing. And we also have a briefing on the 2026 Code Amendment Series. We're going to meet after that on the 13th. So those are our two last meetings of the year, and both are public hearings. So if you cannot make it, please let us know, so we can ensure we have quorum. That's it.
Great, thank you. Any commissioner updates? Nope. All right, in that case, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, then we are adjourned.